Morning. We're here at Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting on Wednesday, July 8, 2015, here at the Courthouse Square at 555 Courthouse Northeast Salem. And as tradition, we're gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, I don't know what happened to all those standing-room-only crowds we had, but we have a presentation this morning from Tamara Gesh in our Community Services Department about something that has a bunch of pigs and animals. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. And I'm Tamara Gesh. I'm the Director of Community Services, and I have the great pleasure of working with Pam Zelinski, who is our Fair Board Chair. And we're excited to be here this morning to talk to you about what's coming up. Starting tomorrow, Thursday through Sunday is the Marion County Fair. And as you can see on the screen, it says, "It's all about social, local, and fun." So, as tradition, we take the opportunity to talk to you and to the public about what is happening at the fair this year. You can see that we have a lot of exciting things happening, from bull riding and concerts with Mark Chestnut on Saturday. On Sunday, we're having our first Latino Music Fest, which is an all-day event. It does take a special ticket to get into the Latino event, but by and large, most of the activities at the fair come free, including the Mark Chestnut concert. That is $9 for adults, $5 for youth, and five and under are free. And there are special pricing. Individuals can go onto our website at mcfair.net, and they can see all the pricing. They can still buy tickets ahead of time so they can avoid the lines. But we have also new this year in our Jackman Long building, it's the County Chic Boutique. So, if you like shabby chic kind of furniture and kind of art deco kind of activities and materials, we have a set of vendors that are coming in specifically with that. We always have our Clued Talent Show, so if you are looking for a stage and you still have some interest, perhaps give us a call and see if we have room left on our community stage to show us your great talents. We'd love to see that. Pam, you want to talk a little bit about 4H?
Well, the 4H and FFA kids are moving in today with their animals, and they're very excited about that for the next showing, the next four days. And then on Saturday night, we have the auction. We have the auction on Saturday night so that you can buy the market animals, which is a big event for the 4H and FFA kids. And I think they're all very excited about going on, seeing what's going on in the fair. And they've got horse activities, and it should be a very fun weekend for them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Pam, so if somebody buys one of those, like a pig, a Brentano pig, for example, because there's a lot of them there that have that last name, what's the process? So, you buy the pig, and then do you choose the butcher, or is there a place?
Correct. There are several places that you can have your pig processed.
Okay.
And then you just check whichever one you want, and then you have it, actually, it's yours from there on.
Right. So, you pay for the, in addition to that, you would actually pay for the butcher. So, 100% of those funds go to the youth that raise the animal?
Correct. There is a small fee that they take out for an auction fee, but the rest of it all goes back to the kids.
Great.
Now, Tammy, I can't let you turn this slide before we comment on camel rides, because it's timely. I'll tell you why. I was just talking to a neighbor and saying, "You know, if this heat wave comes up, we could be a desert, we'll be riding camels around." You guy might want to know how to do that.
Well, you know, we're not weather forecasters, but we did plan properly with having the camels come to town. So, we are excited with that addition. But along with that, we have Walk on the Wild Side, which is, you know, lions and tigers that'll be there, as well as reptiles and all of those things. We haven't had that for, I don't think the county fair has ever had that. I remember that as a child at the state fair. So, really excited about having them here in Marion County Fair this year. You know, and you'll be able to see a lot of the standard, typical things that people come year after year to participate and enjoy. I also, you see at the bottom there, it says, "Fear Portland Haunted Clown House." Apparently, this is not for the lighthearted, nor the young child. This is more for the teenagers. And this is a brand-new event that's only been in one other place in Oregon, so we're the second fair that it'll be at. We're excited for that addition as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Tammy, you didn't talk about the open-class exhibits and how Commissioner Brentano and I are going to be doing some judging.
Yes.
Are there any pies this year?
We are really hoping that there are pies for you to sample. We know that we typically have a good selection of cheesecakes. However, people can still, up until, I think it's 3 o'clock, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., they can still bring in their open-class goods and be, you know, you can still start baking this morning and still make it in in time to get it part of the fair in the open class. And our open class allows people from Marion County and any county that touches Marion County to participate in our open-class competitions.
Another comment in regards to that, the youth in the open-class division are going to get premiums this year for their awards, and that is from the Marion County Fair Foundation. Also, the 4H kids are going to get an increase in their premiums like they did last year. We are gonna double what the county, what the 4H department has done.
That's great.
And those are all from proceeds that were generated out of the swine and wine event that was held earlier this year.
I always wanted to know, though, why Sam gets to judge all the cheesecakes and I get the pickles.
You two can have that conversation.
I have like 11 years' experience. I have a selective palate. I appreciate the finer things, and I appreciate blueberries. That's all you need to know.
Swine and wine, that, I think there was a fishing trip that was purchased for a lot of money.
There was a fishing trip there. I think we've talked about this before. All right. So, Thursday, which is tomorrow, we're open at 10:00 a.m., but all day long is Honors Day. There will be senior activities happening throughout the day. And then we also have, which I watched last year, was just a blast, was the Bean Bag Baseball, which has teams of seniors competing against one another. Lots and lots of fun. They have a great time, and it just puts smiles on anybody who's around there. All kinds of things there. But we also have, at 4:15, there is a Veterans Tribute that is on the main stage. And we invite the community to come in to the fair and join us in celebrating both our veterans and service members who really help our communities experience the freedoms that we have every day. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to salute them for their service and for their ongoing support of our communities. And then we have all kinds of activities also going throughout the day, and I believe it goes till 10 o'clock on Thursday. And there's activities that happen throughout as well. Then on Friday is Awesome Day. Awesome Day is a sponsorship that we joined together with Awesome 3000. So, any kid who shows up wearing their Awesome 3000 shirt gets in free to the fair. So, put those on and come on in and join the fun. Brand-new ride is Break the Chain Monster Truck Ride. And then we have some social media games. We're trying to step up our game in keeping up with the technology. So, we've got a lot of those kinds of activities that are gonna be happening on the grounds, get kids and family members to experience the fair in a different way. And we have contests and giveaways throughout the day. Friday night, we also have, what's not on here, is a Bon Jovi Tribute Band that will be playing. So, that's Friday at 8:00 and 9:00 p.m. on the main stage.
Also, on Thursday and Friday, the youth will be showing, 4H and FFA will be showing all of their animals, their showmanship and their different classes for their animals.
Saturday, we're calling that Agricultural Day, because really, that's what the fair is about, is really to display Marion County's historic agricultural commitment and heritage. We are having all kinds of fun things happening there. As Pam mentioned earlier, we have the 4H barbecue and market auction. And I also mentioned Mark Chestnut and the Bull Riding Event that is happening as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I take my grandson to the fair every year, and I think everybody needs to know how really great those kids are with their animals. And that's the one thing my grandson talks about after every one of these fairs, is the animals that he got to see. And it's a great time for grandparents and their grandchildren.
And Byron at Home Depot does a great job with the kids workshop, too. So, that'd be great. They're so good about doing those things.
They really are. And I took tons of pictures last year of that event, just because the kids were having so much fun. And he was doing a great job of encouraging them as they were building their birdhouse, or whatever activity he had set aside. Then Sunday is our typical Family Day, just fun for all. I mentioned the Latino Music Festival that's happening. Again, that's a separate ticket. You can buy those by going online. And then the Dairy Women's Cheesecake Contest. You can join Commissioner Brentano.
If I could interrupt you, Tammy, I'd like to invite you. I'm gonna let you be a guest taster. I'm just gonna let you verify, just, yeah, partial sample, just enough to kind of know what's going on. We'll build you into this.
Excuse me.
We also have our Barbecue Grill Off. We have more teams than we've had in the past, so we're excited to see it grow. And this grill-off will actually lead into a more advanced, so the winners of this will go on to another competition. So, it's kind of a seated program here, and it'll be fun just to watch them. A little bit of local celebrity happening on the grills. You want to talk about the costume contest?
The 4H Small Animal Costume Contest, actually, is more than just small animals. Last year, they had llamas that were dressed up. And it was really, really interesting and a lot of fun. They had a lot of fun dressing them up as different characters, and they would parade around the grounds. And it was really, and it was hard to tell sometimes what the animal was underneath the costume.
What time is the tamale-making contest?
Let's see, tamale contest? I don't know if I have that in my list. It's gonna be happening on Sunday.
Okay.
I think we have a new judge.
You can call the fair office.
Judge the cheesecake. I'll eat the tamales.
There you go. For any of those special events that we've listed, you can call our fair office, and they have all those details, or go onto our website. Want to give special attention and thanks to all of our sponsors for making this year's fair possible. Without the support of our local businesses and community members and the county and all of our wonderful volunteers, including our Fair Board members, the fair wouldn't happen. There's no way that we could possibly cover all the costs that it takes to put this on. We have, under contract, an event coordinator and marketing company who is helping us work out all the details, but it is on the backs of our sponsors and our volunteers. The Marion County Fair only is allowed to have seven board members, and you think about an event the size of the Marion County Fair, and to put that burden on to seven individuals is huge. But they do a fabulous job. We've recruited two other key volunteers who help us in other aspects of the fair. But we have secured many, many, many volunteers to help run the fair inside and out. Some of them are helping to set up. Some of them are helping to make sure the events happen without any flaws or with ease. And then we have folks who are helping us tear down the event as well. So, as the Director, and being able to watch this happen, and it just all come together, I'm just amazed. And I'm so thankful that we're able to bring this to the community in a way that they get to enjoy four days. It's probably one of the least expensive ways for you to have fun in our community. You get not only some local flavor of our historic agricultural community, but you get some carnival, you get some carnival food, you get to taste some of our local vendors, and enjoy some music and local talents. So, we hope that you'll join us in the Fair Board as we go forward this year, and we look forward to seeing you at the fair.
I guarantee you will have a fun time.
Oh, I know. Oh, you're looking at me. I always do.
I know.
But, a couple of things. One, you didn't really mention, and it's more, maybe it's more of a closed event, but the legislative reception. That's such a good opportunity. Department heads, the Commissioners, and then Mayors, council people from around the county come. Good chance to, you know, build relationships and just to get to know people on a social basis. And that's tomorrow night. It's always a good time. But the other thing is, this weather looks like it's gonna break, and I think it just kind of times out nicely. And I know that the weather makes a big difference on attendance, so I hope people realize that it's all set up. And fun thing to do, especially for families, and get out there. Make it worth all the effort that you all put into it.
Thank you. We hope so as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more.
Only one?
No, you can have as many as you want, John.
There's one other thing that Sam and my grandson have in common, and that's the Dairy Women's Milkshakes and Ice Cream. And if you haven't tried it, you've really missed something.
I think I've tried that a few times.
I usually be walking with a Marion Berry shake. Your doctor doesn't like it. We didn't have to know everything.
So, thank you so very much. We appreciate your support, and we look forward to seeing you and our community members at the fair.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
And I'll be there Thursday in the Save Our Food booth from 10:00 to 2:00.
Save our food?
Yeah. Master recycling.
Oh, wonderful.
Actually, you and I don't need to save much, because we usually finish the place.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, so, nobody signed up for public comment, but I saw Jenna, you came in. Did you want to make some comments before we move forward with our consent agenda?
No, I'm just happy the legislature's adjourned so I can come back and be here.
Do you want to say anything to the public, or to us? Okay, great. So, we'll move on to our consent calendar. It's good to have you here.
All right, Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On that, under Board of Commissioners, we have an OLCC application with a recommended approval for Silver Falls Country Store LLC in Silverton. Approve an order appointing Kim Brady, Tim Fox, Jeff Puderbaugh, John Tagg to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, reappointing Chief Jerry Moore, Bob Royer, Anna Peterson, Mike Runyon, Don Frederickson, Ed McKenney, and Scott Russell. Finance, approve an order reappointing Dave Kinney to the Marion County Budget Committee for term ending June 30, 2018. Juvenile, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for $1,739,170 to provide juvenile crime prevention, basic, and diversion services through June 30, 2017. Public Works, reschedule a public hearing for August 26, 2015, for appeal of a case, AR-15003. Sad LLC, that's the DeSantis. And under Sheriff's Office, approve a contract for services with CorrectRx for $325,000 to provide pharmaceutical services to inmates at the Marion County Jail through June 30, 2016.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion?
Just one. I'm so happy to see Dave Kinney continue to be an active member of our Budget Committee and coming back. I really value, well, all their insights, but he has a lot of local government experience, and is a good one.
Great volunteer asset. Okay, seeing none more discussion. All those in favor of consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's approved. Our action item today is under Public Works. Consider an ordinance to adopt the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan amendments, which I think we referred, and Brandon Reich is here with us today. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, representing the staff of the Planning Division of Public Works. The City of Mill City is asking that Marion County concur in and adopt amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. On Wednesday, June 24, the Board held a hearing on the matter and reviewed the testimony and the record. The Board voted unanimously to concur in the amendments. Before you today is an ordinance reflecting that decision. The city has held the first of two readings on its ordinance adopting the amendments and is awaiting the county's final decision to proceed. Because of the city's timeline in this process, the staff recommends the ordinance before the Board be adopted by emergency procedure, by reading by title twice, that the city may proceed with its ordinance adoption in a more timely manner. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, we've, I think we just heard this, what, a week ago? No, two weeks ago.
I don't have any questions, so I think I'd like to go ahead. It is an emergency wanting to be in effect now, so Chair Cameron, make a motion that we read this ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion to read the title twice, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Chair will read the title twice. In the matter of an ordinance amending the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting amendments to the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan, including a coordinated population forecast of 2,461 for the year 2035, and occurring in two properties previously included in the urban growth boundary of the city, and declaring an emergency. Read it the second time. In the matter of an ordinance amending the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting amendments to the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan, including a coordinated population forecast of 2,461 for the year 2035, and concurring in two properties previously included in the urban growth boundary of the city, and declaring an emergency.
And now, Chair Cameron, make a motion that we approve the ordinance.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the ordinance, emergency clause, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think our work for this part of the day is done. Oh, I guess we gotta read the schedule where we're at. So, obviously, we're here right now. Later on today is the Economic Development Advisory Board from 3:30 to 5:00. Location is upstairs in the Commissioner's Board Room on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. Tomorrow, Thursday, July 9, 7:30 to 9:00, our Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant on 499 8 River Road in Kaiser. Also tomorrow, the 9th, Thursday, 4:15 to 5:15, the Marion County Fair, the Veterans Tribute at the Oregon State Fairgrounds on the main stage. Also tomorrow evening at the fairgrounds, the legislative reception at the Oregon State Fairgrounds, 5:30 to 7:30. And then on Friday, 7:10, from 8:00 to 10:00, Salem Chamber greeters at Marion County, at the Marion County Fair, also at the fairgrounds. So, we're gonna be at the fair quite a bit over the next couple of days, and potentially over the weekend. Then on Monday, 7:13, from 9:00 to 11:00, we have a management update, and the location is in the Silverton Conference Room on the first, fifth floor, that's a misprint, fifth floor of 555 Court Street Northeast. On Tuesday, July 14, 7:30 to 8:30, State and Marion County Meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe at 510 North Third Street in Staton. Also on Tuesday, the 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., a Service District Meeting, a location upstairs on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room here at 555 Court Street Northeast. Also on Tuesday, the 14th, from 4:00 to 6:00, Joint Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council and Reentry Council Meeting in the Commissioner's Board Room here on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. And then on Wednesday, the 15th, we're back here at 9:00 a.m. for our board session in the Senate Hearing Room. And that is a pretty long list, considering the time of year.
Could I have a moment?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. First of all, I'm pretty glad this was a short meeting. I had a little surgery thing, and I don't know if I'm real sharp, but made it through that simple event. Happy about it. But watching things, kind of off the subject that I started with, we continue to have drownings, accidents around water. I don't know how many times you tell people to be careful. You've been involved up the Norfolk, and we're having a lot of trouble with people parking illegally and wrongly. I know there's not, it's very popular, especially as Detroit seems to be down. I don't know if that's related or not, but I suspect it is.
Sure it is.
And, so people will be disappointed, but I guess if you don't get up early, you probably will not be able to find a place to park. And we're having to cite people. They're blocking the road, and we have such extreme fire danger out there. Gonna keep things open. So, I just kind of want to talk about that a little bit and let people be aware of the problems.
One, then I got a call yesterday from a private property owner over there, up there, who, people are parking on the county road, but it doesn't say no parking, but there's no place to go, other than private property, to get to the river. They go down into their private property, and then they're partying, and this is vacant private property. And they're partying in the river, and the people on the south side of the river are complaining, and the trespassing is happening. So, it's one of those things of respect, and I keep going back to the Ancient Forest Tour that I took two weeks ago, and how that group is trying to take kids and educate them by these outdoor schools. And, you know, I think education and respect for other people's property is something that you and I probably grew up with differently than people have today. And we need to really try to do what we can to support that issue. And hopefully, the lake will be back up next year and take some of the pressure off. But it's gonna continue this year, because that lake, as we heard on, what, Monday, from the drought update?
Going faster than they said.
Yeah. The lake's going down. In fact, I got a call yesterday, a personal call, from a guy that owns a marina, and says, "I need to move your boat, because the channel is getting too shallow, and they're gonna have to take some docks away." So, they're doing everything they can to keep recreation going up there, but it's definitely a challenge. And we're gonna go up Friday and tour a little bit more and see some of this property.
My kids took the jet ski up last night, figured out how to get it in.
At Mongol?
Yeah. But they said there was only one other boat out there, and heard it's so hot. It's a shame that we can't have that resource that we usually have, but it's available for people that wanna make the effort and still use it.
Oh, and once you're on the lake, it's beautiful. There's lots of water out There's lots of water out there. I mean, relative to play on, so. But yeah, we'll continue to work on that. I think the sheriff and Public Works are doing, you know, a lot to cooperate together. Obviously, the feds, the Forest Service this weekend implemented some situation that they actually controlled traffic up there. They reacted very quickly.
Communication's been a problem. We talked about it last year. I wish we would have done something. Really didn't get much traction. Maybe we will now, but I know there's one change up at the fire hall at Elkhorn, is that right? At least an emergency box people should be aware of. Have you seen that, or how do you?
Yeah, it's right out front of the fire station. It's well-signed at Salmon Creek, Salmon Falls.
Tells people to go there.
It says at the fire station, which is about two and a half miles away. And I know Alan, our Public Works Director, said there was a gentleman at the meeting a week ago, Monday night, up at the little North Fork, who I think he worked for Frontier, and he actually knows there's still a line at the Salmon Creek. And so we're still, or Salmon Falls, we're still looking at seeing if we can reactivate that box.
I'd love that. There ought to be something up there. People just don't expect in this day and age that you can't get through and kind of don't know what to do.
Well, and this last accident that we were just talking about this morning before we went online occurred up at Three Pools, which is in the.
Opal Creek.
Opal Creek Forest Service property. They don't have any communication up there. So, I mean, where does it start? Where does it stop?
Some's better than none.
Right. So, yep, okay.
Anyway, that's all I got. Cheesecake.
Cheesecakes. Oh, yeah, we get to pick up our blueberries that we bought.
You do know that.
I don't.
Commissioner Brentano pulled rank on me so that, but he told me that I got to taste pies. Well, in the last five years, I think we've had one pie, and it nearly made us all sick. So I'd like to see some of our fine pie makers, bakers out there in Marion County bring some pies.
He's kind of whiny this morning. Can we close this up? I don't think people want to hear this.
Yeah. I know the commissioner doesn't because he gets the good stuff.
I do? What? Oh, he gets the cheesecakes?
Yes.
Okay.
You get the tamale.
I'd love to get the tamales. Yeah, I love the tamales. But I've actually told a constituent who made an apple pie, in fact, you probably even know her, big realtor here in town, sells a lot of real estate. She made an apple pie, I tasted one day, and I said, you need to enter this in the pie contest. I don't know if she's going to or not, but I'll see her Friday. I'll ask her if she did. Anything else?
Well, now you brought up history. My grandmother, Mary Samuel, in a bygone age when the Commissioners were Gary Here, Randy Frankie, and Gary Conn's, got a citation from the Commissioners for the best pie in Marion County. So I have a little background in that, too. I want you to know that. Please, we need to stop this because it's just making.
You know, hey, you know what's part of the problem with pies, John? Is that we have one of the best commercial pie makers here in Marion County, and people eat those pies, and they're, it's like, almost tastes like you could do homemade. In fact, I've tasted some homemade pies that I would not want to eat again, like you said. And what's the name, what's the name, what's the name of that group?
Volamette Valley.
Volamette Valley Pie, right here in Marion County, makes great pies. My grandpa, talking about history, my grandpa taught me there was only two kinds of pies he liked. Hot and cold. So, and he's taught me, since he taught me that, I found out there was only one kind of beverage that I like, and that was cold.
One of my favorite pies is strawberry rhubarb, and the commissioner just enjoys that to no end.
I think that's why I got disqualified for bad pies.
Rhubarb. In fact, NORPAC said this year that they had a hard time, this is interesting because we were out at Staton, I think we heard this, they had a hard time, they couldn't get all the rhubarb in because of labor this year. Had a shortage on rhubarb.
This is mean, but that's just fine with me.
Oh, yeah, because you love rhubarb.
No, I don't.
Okay, I think we're going to adjourn this fine discussion and meeting today. Thank you. We'll see you next week on Wednesday.